Right, like call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2024 to order. Call please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Christensen.
Here.
Trustee Curtis. Trustee Gailey.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Nudge. Trustee Nudgevedge.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
All right, audience comments. Do you want now, Ms. Pierce?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So I was looking over the Village Board Report. And noticing the things that were mentioned about 302 Mitchell Road, the warehouse. The improvements that are being made, and I wanted to express my appreciation. For all the positive changes that are being made, because it will improve our living conditions. With the current warehouse and hopefully with the proposed warehouse, which is to be built. Previously, whenever I have spoken, I've always mentioned the nuisance and previous experiences in the past few years in having to live. With the current warehouse and its activities. And so I need to mention those, hopefully to prevent the same things occurring with a new warehouse being built. It can be extremely difficult to enjoy your home and yard when the semi trucks are creating a disturbance. So as I've mentioned before, our home is located. Right in the middle of. The current warehouse and their proposed warehouse. So any activity that takes place in the yard. We are aware of. At any time, day or night. We know of all the activity that takes place, as well as we have lights, which. From the current warehouse and then we will have the lights from the new warehouse illuminating our home and yard. So the information in the Village Board Report mentioned that the current tenant will be using the south side. This is going to be very helpful. And is very much appreciated, as it will reduce the nuisance of the previous trucks that were driving next to our home. Which caused disturbances, vibrations, noises, as well as leaving the harmful air pollutants behind. The Village Board Report mentions that a solid fence has been. Added along the northern drive side aisle. As of today, I haven't seen a fence. And so in the previous meeting back in February. I cited a publication in which a community built a 24-foot fence. To do the division between the residences and the industrial area. So the height 24 feet does sound a little bit extreme, however, it really is necessary and makes sense. The height of the fence is to reduce the noise. It's to keep those harmful pollutants within, contained in the warehouse yard and not into our yards. And so it will keep the noise down and. Hopefully reduce the lights from coming over into our homes. Since semi trucks trailers tend to be 13 and a half feet high. A fence no less than 16 feet should be installed. Because if you're going to have a fence. Shorter than the semi truck trailer. Then the fumes are still going to come over, the noise is still going to bounce over. And it still isn't going to be too effective. So. We do need a high fence, 16 feet or higher. To reduce the noise as well as keep the toxic fumes from entering our lungs. So even though this report did state that the tenant will be using the south side. There is always a possibility that trucks will either currently or in the future will use the north side as well. So building a fence with the proper height. Will be a proactive measure as well as reduce our vision line warehouses. So there are just several articles about the damage that these truck fumes create to. A person's body. We have the air pollution, the noise pollution and the fumes, and they're causing damage to people's lungs. They're developing asthma and many other health issues. So one article I found interesting was in Amsterdam and they. Did a study by the airport and there were three schools. And they found that they had to give several. Children inhalers. Because of the fumes. So their statistics was every cubic centimeter of air breathe. Tens of thousands ultrafine particles. Enter the body. So the children have had to use inhalers. I think that's kind of sad. And then just in July, the George Washington University. Produced a first of a kind study that shows people living in communities located next to the large warehouses. Are exposed to 20% more of a traffic-related air pollutant that can lead to asthma and other health conditions. Gauge Cure says increased truck traffic to and from these recently built large warehouses. Means people living downward are inhaling an increased amount of harmful nitrogen dioxide solution. Sam Becker, a global clean air project manager for the Environmental Defense Fund. In May said that truck fumes are contributing to more health complications for nearby residents. Communities near these mega warehouses. Face higher rates of harmful air pollution associated with diseases like asthma, COPD and stroke. These are diseases that disproportionately impact children and older people. So last February, I did mention that I had health issues, which began with the onset of DART. Doing their, conducting their business. With their busy activity. And then I happened to be visiting with my next door neighbor in March and he just mentioned, he says, you know, I really think the warehouse is affecting my health. And that's about the extent of our conversation with his health. I, I just said, well, then you need to come to the village and tell them, but he's out of town today. So. It does affect people's health being close to this type of activity. So having the south side be used will greatly reduce the air pollution from coming onto our properties. But we really need a fence of 16 feet or higher. It's really necessary for that. Noises from the trailers connecting to the cabs. Should be reduced with a higher fence. Any fence less than 16 feet will allow the air and noise pollution to cross over. So I was in my yard last week, went out to the mailbox and I kept hearing the loud noise of the. Trailer and kept connecting together and this went on like four times. So I thought, well, maybe I should go see what's going on over there. And they really were on the south. West side. And yet it was just clear as could be that connecting the cab and the trailer, it was just very loud. So a fence smaller than 16 feet will negatively affect the market value of the homes along Thompson Avenue. As there will be the visual of the warehouses as well as the noise that I've already talked about. The village does have an ordinance, number 5.4, letter D. Which states that the industrial development will not negatively affect the market value of the homes in the village. So in closing, I'd just like to ask that the village leaders. The trustees, our mayor, to please consider creating business hours for this industrial section. Due to the proximity of the location of the homes. Even with the fence, the activity noise will be heard in the neighborhood. Thus interfering with the quiet enjoyment of our yards and homes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so item one, discussion, Steve.
It's up to you, Mayor, but if you'd like to, if you'd like to rearrange the agenda and go right into item two first, you can do that if you want.
Yeah.
Resident just spoke.
Right.
Okay, so if we're gonna.
Sorry, we have. Well, come on up and state your name and address and yeah, come on up.
My name's Julie Just Chomsky. I live at 104 Harding Court. I just, I didn't realize that that document was available until Maxine just stated so, so I haven't actually reviewed it. So I don't know if Prologis is presenting all the plans. I just wanted to kind of understand fully. What was, what all changes are being implemented and then potentially. Have a comment after. As far as like the south entrance is that. In entering and exiting, or is it only employees that are going to be using the north entrance, that sort of thing?
I'm thinking they'll probably go through that.
Yeah, so I can, I just wanted to make sure you're going to get the clarification.
Yeah, if you have a question after.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so item two.
Okay, item number two on the agenda tonight is the aforementioned 302 Mitchell beauty. It is for a new warehouse development. As the residents had stated, there is an existing warehouse at 300 adjacent to it. Tonight's presentation is, is a combination of two things. The first is to give an update. Last time this was that committee of the whole, there was resident comment and the board had some questions. So Nathan is going to give an update on what is going on with the existing site. At 300 Mitchell. And then in addition, he will give a small presentation, then Prologis will give a presentation on the planned unit development special use that they're requesting for 302 Mitchell afterwards. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nathan.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So just, you know, a brief recap. We saw this plan back in February at Planning Commission. February 6th, Planning Commission, February 19th, COW Agenda. And at that time, many of the residents came out and expressed these concerns that were heard tonight. Many of the concerns dealt with the building at 300 Mitchell, the existing building. And to be clear, that building is not up for approval. But things that go on at that building affect not only the neighbors, but the building that is up for approval. So a lot of those comments were heard at the last meeting. During that time, since, since that time, the tenant that was in there, DART, has moved out. There is a new tenant, Beembo Bakery, probably seen their trucks around. They'll be consolidating all of their warehouses around Chicago into this facility. As part of that, they have several build-out packages, so they have building permits in for, you know, interior office, racking, those types of things. They also have some site changes that engineering plans are in for review right now. And a lot of those changes. Effect are, are some of the things that were talked about at the last meeting, so I want to update you on those. We'll move into the 302 side. So as part of the build-out package for the new tenant. The southern access point is being opened up into a full access. If you recall, right now, there's a pork chop in there and it's right in only. So it is being, that's being removed and the southern entrance will be a full access. They will re-stripe the left turn lane. On Mitchell Road to allow whole movement of trucks and cars into the southern access. Additionally, the southern car parking. So this is existing car parking, but it wasn't really utilized. So they are going to, in that area, beef up the pavement section, repave it with thicker. And that's going to be the truck staging area. So they're going to build an office in here where the trucks can check in. And then there are several spots on that lower area for trucks to pull in, get checked in. If they come in early, you know, that's, that was a lot of the trouble. With the previous tenant, the trucks would show up in the middle of the night, couldn't get in the gate. You know, if any type of thing like that would happen, they have a staging area here south of the building. That they can wait and take care of that from. Finally, the original approval of this building had trailer parking on both sides. Only the western side was ever put in. The eastern side was land bank, so it was just grass. And that caused some of the problems of when they had too many trailers, they were parked out on the access road or parked in the car parking spaces. So they're going to go put in those land banked trailer stalls, so there should never be a reason for a trailer to be outside of the trailer court. So all of those things are happening with the new tenant coming in. Plans are under review right now. Again, that has a ripple effect as you look at the new buildings. Obviously, the drive aisles. For the new building are the same drive aisles as the old building. Access right through. So. We don't have a tenant known for the new building, so I can't tell you exactly. You know, where, what their internal layout would be, but since the southern drive aisle is now open. You know, that can be the primary truck entrance. A couple other things. Prologis has done. They have installed guards in all of the existing light fixtures to help direct the light down. So there's less light spill off. And they're also going to, as part of the existing project. Update any missing landscaping or dead landscaping. So they're going to go through the site and do a, you know, a review of all the landscape. So with those improvements for 300 underway, Prologis would like to come back and talk about 302. We remember at the COW meeting in February. We said we would go look at all these concerns, but we didn't vote on anything. It was kind of tabled. So it's back here tonight to show you all those improvements. With the 302 building, they are showing a fence. Along the northern property line. It's an eight-foot fence, solid fence. And they have some more information on that. They also would like to talk to the board a little bit about cost sharing. It is a very expensive fence, even at eight feet. So they want to ask your opinion on some of those things. So with that. Prologis has some slides. So Kelsey, are you presenting? Come on up.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the time here tonight. So most of this is what you've all seen before. There's not. As far as the slides go, a ton of, a ton of updates there, but we'll run through what we've got quickly in case there's anyone new here. That, that doesn't have. As much of a background on the project and then we can go through the new changes and additions that we have. Which, which Nathan talked about a lot of it already, but. Prologis is a very large, has a very large presence in Chicago overall. We have over 80 million square feet. And specifically in this particular corridor, we've got a lot of product out here. So. We have a lot of, a lot of experience kind of managing these buildings and going through the different dynamics we have with the various customers within the portfolio. This is just a map of kind of where all of our different buildings are in this particular area. Thanks. So here's what, here's what Nathan had previously put up and is the new site plan for the building or the updated site plan, I should say. Nothing has changed on this as far as the building itself. The parking, anything like that, all of that has remained the same as far as what, what we've showed in past meetings. The things that have changed are, as he mentioned, it's actually, or there's a fence on the north side. And what, what we've actually gotten priced at this point is, is a 10-foot fence. I think our note maybe said eight on there, but we did get pricing for a 10-foot fence and that's what the plan would be. Thank you. We, we had included this last time, but this is sort of a representative example of what that would look like. It's Trex fencing and at least at this point, we've. We've decided to, or we were, we're hoping to go forward with that type of fencing. It's got some better acoustical properties to it. And so that's what we are proposing. We would, we would go forth with on the, on the, the northern property line there for 302. And then if you go back to that site plan, just to reiterate, the south entrance will be opened up. Right now, it's showing that kind of median cutout area in the middle there. That's going to be completely paved over. And we will have a full entrance there. You can get in from the right, left and same right, left out of there as well. And then there'll be new turn lanes, left turn lanes striped on Mitchell Road as well, so that the traffic, you know, can keep going on either side. So we're hopeful that, that, that will drive a lot of the, a lot of the traffic for. As Nathan, as Nathan mentioned, 300 is already being set up to, to. Drive more of the, the traffic to the south side with the queuing that we have down there, it being a full, full entrance now. We're hoping that'll help that. And then I just wanted to say too, as we're having discussions on, on. 302 Mitchell with, with our various customers in the portfolio. And we, we are having discussions with, with a few groups right now, nothing that's too far along, but we are continuing to encourage them and say, hey, can we rework this design a little bit? To help move more of the trucks through the south side. So that's certainly something that, you know, we continue to bring up with our customers. In terms of being able to have more of, more of that traffic to the south. And then I was going to mention too, so on 300 Mitchell, we're showing. You know, a fence up along there as well, which, which we ultimately would like to do and would like to put with that, but given that wasn't part. Of the initial approvals for this property, there's not actually any sort of budget in place for that. And the improvements that the tenant is doing. Doesn't include that fence either. And they're actually paying for a substantial amount of their own improvement, so it's not something that we could unfortunately include in that deal. But it is something we ultimately would like to do and we want to have, we wanted to have a broader conversation with North Aurora about. If there's a, you know, an opportunity that we could potentially share in some of that cost. We've got the. The amount up there for it. You're, you're looking at a little over $200,000 to run the fence along. The northern property line of just that 300 property. Again, 302 would be included as part of that overall development. In these approvals, but this, this one, again, it's already been approved and we just don't have, you know, a specific budget to do that. So. That's what we're looking at for the updated improvements for these two properties. And I think it'll, with the new tenant coming in. Customer tenant, customer, we call it. With the new one coming in, we're, we're actually very encouraged by all the dialogue that we've had with them around how they want to make this. Work as well with the neighboring residential. And obviously the improvements that are being made there, I think, show that. And then we'll continue to have that dialogue as we're talking with customers for the 302 building as well. So that's everything I've.
I have a question. I have a question. So when you say cost sharing, is that like split the cost 50/50?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're open to discussion as to how that looks. Ultimately, we do have a, a joint venture partner on this, someone who shares in the costs of all this. And so it's something we have to, we ultimately have to go back to them and get approval for and figure out. And again, it's more of just a. We don't have a budget for this. It's not going into the tenant improvement, so we want to figure out if there's a way we can work together to, to figure out.
Is that for the 10-foot truck fence?
Correct.
So it'll be all the same?
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Can you, can you guys share those bids for our team to obviously review and, and just. Confirm and, and check and everything like that? And is there, is there also a berm there that this would potentially raise the fence a bit more?
So there's a little bit of an incline as far as, as, as you go up and where the landscaping is. So the fence and Maxine, I think you mentioned this as well, it will set up a little bit higher than where the actual roadway is. I don't have the exact geometry of that.
Berm there. So I, I think it was, the fence was shown to be. Behind the light poles, but before the landscaping. So the residents would still see the landscaping and then the fence would be behind that. So between the light poles and the landscaping.
Better yet.
Um, as far as the fence goes, is. You price out the difference between an eight-foot and then a 10-foot, or did you just price it out right at 10 feet?
It's a 10, right? I think there was a comment made last time that maybe eight feet wouldn't be quite enough, but if that's something you want us to look into, we can, we can absolutely price out the difference.
Yeah, and I was actually wondering what the cost might be if, depending if we were able to go a little higher, I don't know. The board would approve something that goes higher, because we have a limit on fences, do we not?
Generally, eight foot is the, the. Limit in industrial districts. So I apologize, I didn't realize it was 10 feet. Thank you for.
Yeah, no worry. I, I, I know it might have been wrong on there, but I did clarify that our bid was for the 10-foot one.
All right, and then the other question I would have is. Maybe four more question to you, Nathan. Is, is there anything that prevents us from prohibiting? That street from, or I guess the driveway on the north side of this new building from going in? Or is that something we cannot prohibit completely? Since there is a south access, can we just?
You do need two access points generally for fire.
Okay.
Safety, you know, so the current building, the, the northern entrance, that's going to be the employee parking. Car parking for the new tenant. Hopefully, whatever tenant goes in the, the new building. Work it out to be the same, you know, have employee parking on the north and trucks on the south. Again, we don't have a tenant lined up just yet, so it, I don't have. Details on that. Certainly restrictions on, you know, no parking on the north drive aisle, no idling, no stacking, all of that stuff, you know. Definitely be put in the PUD.
So he forces that.
So you, you know, you have that stuff in the PUD and if it ends up being, you know, there's 100 trucks parked on the northern road, it's a zoning violation and, you know, we would write a.
We'd have to document it or police would, whatever.
Enforcement.
Okay.
Chief DeLeo. Since our last discussion, you have, do you recall if there's been any improvements on idling trucks or anything like that? Because I know that was a topic we brought up last time.
We haven't noticed any, but I think.
They're vacant. They're vacant, yeah.
It's been vacant.
I believe they left in May.
It's been a while.
I want to say.
Before that, there was maybe here or there, but nothing. And all the midnight shift officers with Jackie Knightley.
Okay.
And, and one, one thing I would mention too with that, that northern drive aisle is having, having the full circulation around the building. I. You know, we've seen just helps those operations move more smoothly around the building. If you, you know, kind of have. Things cut off, then trucks have to move and back up. Like sometimes there's, there's even more maneuvering happening than what normally would be. And so having that northern drive aisle will just help move that circulation around to other buildings.
I had a question about the lighting. I know they put some shields or filters or something on. 300, have they changed it, make it even better on 302, or what's the, kind of the lighting status there?
I, I believe that's the standard as well on 302 is what we have there. Is that correct? Yep. Yep, that, it's, so it'll be the same standard.
Same as the upgrades that are on 300.
Yep.
Carolyn?
I didn't, Jason asked most of the questions that I had, so just as to the 10-foot fence, that would have to be something that's approved also, since it's beyond the eight-foot that's.
Yeah, so we would call that out in the ordinance as well as a, as a cool exception.
I guess, to me, a 16-foot fence is, the resident had suggested is very high and seems to me would be an exponential cost. A 10-foot fence, I think that. While not exactly what the residents want, would still be helpful and I think it would be beneficial to them to have that there. So. Other than that, my questions have been answered, so.
Just be nice to know how. Much distance from the top of the fence to the drive where the trucks will be driving by. Do you think the top of the fence will. Being that it's placed on the berm, be high enough to obscure any truck noise or visual noise for trucks?
We'd, we'd have to confirm, but one, one thing too that I think Nathan actually mentioned at one of our first meetings is that this building will actually sit down quite a bit too from where 300 is. And I want to say it's 15 to 20, it's still kind of being worked out depending on the design, but this building will sit down further than 300 will, so that will help with that gap as well in terms of the road being a little further. So that will help with that gap as well in terms of the road being a little further down than where the, than where it is on three hundred. So the fence will actually, even though it'll sit, you know, at the same height, it'll, the, the building itself will be a little bit lower.
So I would just like to say from a real estate perspective that I, you know, I understand the concern for wanting the sixteen foot fence. I've seen these type of fences up along the expressway, butting against residential neighborhoods. And they're, they're kind of unsightly. So when I'm thinking about a fence along the back and a berm, and usually you look at a berm and it's a three or four foot berm with an eight foot fence. So now we're at ten to 12 feet. But from a perspective of the village sharing the cost, I'd rather see the money put into something other than fencing and more into something like trees or large bushes or something that's going to have a little bit more of a lessening of the environmental impact of all the trucks coming and going. So to say it's, did you say it was 200,000 for the entire fence for both buildings or just for one?
Just for the section along the three hundred property line.
Be 400.
Correct. They're a little bit different in distance. So I think four or three oh two is actually a little bit more, but it's like 225,000 or something. So roughly.
I don't think it's our place to contribute to the development of these properties with something like contributing towards the fence. But I would not, I wouldn't be opposed to contributing towards maybe some landscaping or some trees or something that's going to give a better visual and aesthetic and environmental appeal.
And maybe I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, they're, they're only looking to share the costs for the existing building, not the new building.
Correct. That is a 207. Yeah.
Is that correct? Right. Right.
So my thoughts, same way about the, the landscape. I can't remember exactly how many pine trees, which is like deciduous that drop leaves. I mean, to me, you know, 200,000, you get probably a lot of pine trees and, you know, really just fill that in. And then that would help take that noise in like, especially Curtis said, you know, kind of maybe take out some of the pollutants can, or at least block some of it. But I don't see a sixteen foot fence really, really working there either. But you don't know the exact drop of that three oh two, like picking up twelve inches below the existing one or how, or that fence would kind of line up with.
Oh, you're, you're saying, yeah, Nathan, do you, or, um, Param, do you know how, exactly how much that three oh two drops? Yeah. So about 15 feet. It's, it's pretty substantial. The building will actually drop. So call it, if you're, you know, if you're 15 feet below, the berm is two to three feet. And then your fence is above that 10 feet. That's what 20.
In that road will actually be below the, the road that it comes.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a gra, I mean, it's a gradual decline. Yeah. I can't, yeah.
Right.
But yeah, so it'll be a gradual.
Any other thoughts?
No, I'm good.
Good with it? Good? Okay. Good as far as not cost sharing the fence and, or what?
Well, I think we should get to review the quotes and if you have multiple quotes, just to ensure that.
Or maybe work with staff and see what options are and.
Yeah, so we can put together some options on, uh, different cost sharing items, what that would look like.
Yeah. But I commend you for working with the staff and some of the residents and the board and, and trying to work together because it's, you know, zoned properly, but it's when you got houses nearby. But I mean, you did some, you know, changes and tried to come up with a solution that worked for everyone. So.
Yeah, the road improvements be a big help and I'm sure they're very costly. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, one last question. Where, do you know where most of the trucks that arrive at the site are coming from? Will they be coming down off like, is that corporate?
The new customer that's coming in?
I guess for anybody. Yeah. Are they coming from the north or would they be coming from the south? Do you know?
I'm, I'm not sure. I think when we did the, do you have that on the traffic set? I think we were, it was most of them were coming from corporate. But do we?
I, I don't have the traffic study on a slide, but it's corporate and filter.
That would make sense because a toe away from Farnsworth.
Come right out of Farnsworth.
Okay. See, I was gonna say if.
It's definitely the, uh, the majority of them, but I think some are coming from the north as well.
Yeah. I was gonna say if they're coming down corporate, the first entrance they'll see is the south entrance. So that'll, that'll help as well.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, item one.
Thank you, Mayor. So just to wrap that up, Nathan and I will get some numbers, put it together and most likely bring it back to a, a committee of the whole meeting.
Great.
Okay. Item number one on the agenda tonight was a gas and wash concept plan. This is a, a plan for a development that is on the corner of Airport Road and Route 31. It's a concept plan, which means the petitioner isn't necessarily moving forward yet. What we did is whenever we see something that has a lot of complexities to it or there's some special use requirements are going to, uh, need to be discussed. We like to bring it to the board first, show you the concept plan, see how the board receives it. And then I'll give direction to develop around whether or not they want to pursue, uh, going forward or not. So with that being said, I'm going to have Nathan walk through the concept for gas and wash.
Okay. So Gas and Wash is looking at the Asbury property, which I believe, I, I need my North Aurora historians here, started life as a hotel and was an OTB at one point. Looking through, there's, there's a lot of history on this property.
I think it was a racetrack. I think it was Aurora Downs at one time.
Right. Um, but it has been, uh, the buildings there have been demolished since at least 2010. They were right in there and then the, the empty parking lot has been there ever since. The property is zoned B two, so it is zoned general business. Um, and the comprehensive plan does call for this area to be local commercial uses. The current proposal is for a gas and wash facility on the property. This would include an 8,000 square foot convenience store with two quick service restaurant tenants and a video gaming area. A drive-through would be included for one of the restaurant tenants right there. Usually they have something like a Dunkin' Donuts or a Jimmy John's or, you know, there's a Dunkin' Donuts right down the streets. Maybe not that, but Jimmy John's, a Subway, those types of tenants. And they can, uh, provide you more information on their tenant mix here in a minute. Um, it would also include a, a long tunnel car wash there with three vacuums there. It does have a commercial fueling lane for diesel and it's shown going around the back of the building. So the diesel lanes be back there and then they would exit out this way. Um, as part of this project, I dot is requiring quite a bit of improvements. So they'll be doing quite a bit of widening on 31 to have a dedicated left turn lane in here and a dedicated right turn in. So there will be right of way takes. They'll have to dedicate right of way to I dot and do quite a bit of improvements. Um, and hopefully they can give us a little update on that, but dealing with I dot, it'll probably be onerous. But there, there is definitely, you know, improvements being made. The main entrance would be this center one here. So if a truck was coming into the diesel island there, come in, circle, fill up there and then exit to the south. There is an entrance on Airport Road, but that is an entrance. It's, it's not an exit. So if a truck, a, a car could exit that way, but a truck would not be able to circle back through the car area and get out that way. So your trucks are all exiting to the south. The gas and wash service stations, there's several new ones. So if you've been down Orchard Road lately, there's, there's one down there. I think that's, uh, Sweet Go, maybe Montgomery.
San Montgomery.
So, you know, that their elevations are very nice, modern elevations, brick and stone. Um, there's the drive-through window, the, the front elevation of the convenience store. There's the canopy, um, some various signage they would have. So, you know, a very, very nice architectural package for, for all of the buildings. With that, I will bring up, uh, Gas and Wash to explain a little bit about their business and answer any questions you guys might have.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, my name is Lyman Teeman. I'm the attorney for Gas and Wash. And we have with us this evening, a couple of our representatives. One is Chris Kalachewski with the W T group. And Chris is our planner architect for the facility. Another gentleman that's here this evening with us is Matt Rudiger with our civil engineering firm, MG two A. And we, we appreciate the opportunity to come before the village this evening. This is a project that we've been looking at for the last couple of months. And we've been trying to work back and forth with staff to try and iron out some of the, uh, some of the difficulties we've had with the, pretty much with the narrowness of the parcel and with some of the entrance ways that, uh, have been proposed for this site. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Kalachewski. Chris is going to run through the slide presentation with you. And then when we're all done with that, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to address those. Thank you.
Again, thank you for your time this evening and our presentation. I'd like to just go over a little more in detail, the site plan going from north to south. Originally we had a different site plan and we've decided to go with this one because it actually is more harmonious with the actual land itself, where the northern part is more narrow and, and the southern part is a little bit wider. So going from north to south, we do have the express style car wash. There's basically three types of car washes. A full serve where you see a lot of people at the front vacuuming it. Uh, and then also a lot of people towel drying it at the end. You have the proverbial typical gas station car wash, which was a rollover style car wash where people pull their car in, the equipment goes over it and then they pull out. That's roughly a six minute process. Used to do a lot of those and I used to actually put a sign on the properties that we did for where the fifth car would be is we said, your wait from here is 30 minutes. So obviously that does not work in, in our environment today. So what we're doing is we're proposing the express style where the customer actually stays in her car, rides through the tunnel and then, um, has the option of actually vacuuming their car for free before or after. We've taken polls. I've done this for many years when this was blonde. And, uh, my polls have come back between 47, 52% of people like to vacuum their car before the wash and the other remaining amount like to do it after the wash. And so that's why the configuration is there. The automatic pay term, terminal, terminals are up in the upper right-hand corner. Makes it very convenient. Uh, people make their payment there. Automatic gate goes up, you're allowed to go through, gate comes down. So everyone knows that they're getting the wash, uh, that they're, uh, paying for. All the latest equipment is being used in this facility. There's actually the amount of water being used is much, much less than someone washing their own car on their driveway. The, the spray nozzles limit the amount of water. We recycle water, et cetera. So as a customer comes down, going from the north to the south on the car wash, they'll pull back and then they have the option of going back to vacuum or going right and exiting the site. Uh, we do cross marketing, of course, where they can purchase car washes at the gasoline pumps. We're in the C store as well. As we go further south of the main entry, we have what's called an inline canopy, seven islands. This is the most convenient and safest arrangement of the canopy. Back in the days when you used to have tandem or, or two rows of, of canopies, columns and islands, you know, someone would have to sneak through a car to get to that open island in here. We try not to do that. In some cases we're forced to do that, but in this case we're not. There's an inline, people can see very clearly what islands are open and will drive to those open islands and there will be no, like someone trying to maneuver around the car that's at a pump to get to another pump. Uh, we have a T-shaped canopy. That's one of the elements that Gas and Wash provides. It's a, is a nice safe covered entrance into the building from, from the gasoline canopy. Quite frankly, when, when a person pulls up to the, the gas pump, we try everything we can to get them into the store, quite frankly. And, and that's because when they're at the gas pump, it's like they've just walked beyond the front doors of our store. And so we provide a very safe and, and very climatically friendly covering that adds almost doubles the cost of the canopy. Inside the C store itself, there will be two food vendors, as mentioned. The stacking starts on the north side of the building and comes around the west side. And then the actual drive-through window is on the south, south side of the building. That is almost a hundred percent some type of coffee offering. We have Durite Donuts, we have Dunkin' Donuts, uh, booking into the scooters as well and some other coffee offers. We typically find that. And so the stacking is maximized all the way around the building. Does not interfere with any of the auto and or CFL, um, traffic. We find that the most important two elements in a retail petroleum site is safety and convenience for the customer. You're not sitting on your couch, watching the Olympics and then realize, oh, my car is empty. I gotta go fill it. You fill your car either going home from work or going to work or doing your errands on the weekends. So it's a siphoning use and it's a very uh, conscious way of the way we lay out the sites to make sure that the auto traffic that's filling up does not interfere with the drive-through traffic or the drive-through interfere, vice versa. Or the commercial vehicles interfere with the auto. So very purposely set, um, the, the traffic for the, the commercial feeling lanes are all left turns. Very purposeful because you're looking where you're going. The safest turn for a commercial vehicle to do. And so as you can see, the C store will have two food vendors. The, the first one, as I said, a coffee offering. The second one is typically more of a local, um, need. And we try to find that out through our marketing surveys. Uh, we will have a taco offering at some places. We'll have more of a beef and burger offering or even other type of specialty offering in that space that does not have a drive-through. So that will, uh, not have a drive-through. Behind the building to the west is only two lanes, uh, two CFL lanes. And that's really for the day runners. Our customer is not the overnight with the sleeper cab and that. They have a, a fueling card with either Petro, Travel Centers of America or Love's. Those three have about 80 to 85% of the big interstate rig type traffic. We have the local traffic. So they, like a person that has a account with Loves and stuff like that, they can't use their card here. And so we're looking for the, the local traffic that's already on the road. That's again, the success of the retail petroleum facility or fueling facility is the amount of traffic on the road. The existing amount of traffic warrants investment of multi-millions, close to $10 million of investment into this property. Um, so with the CFL lanes, you'll notice there's three things happen, absent from what is typically a truck stop. Those three things are one, truck parking. There are no designated truck parking stalls in here. So this is for fueling and you'll see a line, uh, to the, the south of the, the trucks that they can pull down a little bit, park and get in just for, uh, cleaning up any kind of, uh, billing errors or quite frankly, hopefully grab a sandwich and, and then go on the road. The, the other things are there are no showers, no laundry facilities in this building. Very typical for a truck stop. And the third thing is a full serve sit-down restaurant. We do not have any of those elements. So, and we don't have separate truck desks. We don't have a separate merchandising area for that. It's really for what we call the day runners, the box trucks and the landscapers that use our business. Now with that said, even with that, we only are showing two lanes. The largest that we've done is a seven to eight lanes. Typical is four lanes. Uh, the largest that we've done is a seven to eight lanes. Our typical is four lanes. But here's two lanes. We're only expecting about seven trucks a day at this facility. And so if we can go on to the next slides. One of the things that was mentioned, this is the car wash. We use real stone. All our buildings are masonry bearing. They're not a thin brick with wood studs. Uh, it's a commitment from the owner. Uh, which by the way, gas and wash is locally owned. It's a family owned business out of Tinley Park. And uh, commitment to the communities are very serious about hiring locally and also contributing charitable events. They also participate a lot in the parades and such. And one of the commitments we talked about was a T shaped canopy. This is a full masonry bearing building. The roof, the roof of the car wash is a hollow core precast concrete plank. So all any noise that's generated in the car wash stays in the car wash. And even with that, we use the latest and greatest technology and roller doors and and the low volume uh Um, dryers at the end of the car wash. Uh, next slide please. Uh, this is a C store. We want to make it clear that it's a four sided building. We don't just put the The fancy looking material on the front. We do it on all four sides of the building. Again, the C store is all a masonry bearing building. Next slide please. Uh, this is evident of the lighting that we have. We use light emitting diodes or more commonly known as LED lighting, Which is very focusable. Uh, it's not like the old gas stations of I used to say twenty years ago, but now I should I say like thirty or forty years ago. Uh, where the metal halide hung below the canopy and you could see that glare forever. The these lights are all within the canopy and all within the yard light fixture. They're all able to be thrown directly as to how we want them. The environment underneath the canopy is a task oriented environment. So we wash the faces of the dispensers with the lighting. There's no need for the lighting to go out. The same thing with our yard lights. They're all focused into the roadways. Uh, we make the transitions of the site. That's where we put the light and not just a general maximum. So we meet all the regulations. We will meet all the regulations that you have. Next, uh. The signage is also very much the same, stone and brick, and then just augmenting the Signage for the site, basically based on the speed of the road for safe Location, safe recognition for someone to go from the middle lane to the right. Uh, next slide.
Prices are locked in, right?
Depends on the election, but that's a political.
Uh, that's the last one I have.
Uh, if we could go back to the site plan. So that's really it. I mean, Matthew's here to answer any civil related questions. We'll typically do underground detention. And we'll do above ground detention in that upper area right in there as well. Um, we're very conceptual. Some of the things that inside the building, This this obviously is a for profit business, right? And so the some of the business things, we have the fueling, we have the C store sales, we have the car wash, But also the gaming is a very important part of that uh stool to keep it upright and going. Uh, we will, as was mentioned, car wash closes at ten. The CFL will close at that time. I know it was, I think nine or something. And really the C store, we like to do twenty-four hours because Quite frankly, that that old commercial of time to make the donuts is true. And they're in there at two o'clock in the morning and they're starting to uh prep and get things ready for the next day. And we like to have the store open. The dispensers that are sitting out under the auto canopy are at least thirty thousand dollars a piece. So we like to have eyes on that. Um, and so that's really uh why uh we want to be at twenty-four hours. And all our facilities are.
In your packet, there was an a a sample store layout from one of their other facilities. I'm sorry, I didn't have a slide. It is in your packet if you want to take a look at.
I've been at the one in Montgomery many times. It's really a nice store. I I think it's nice. I mean, You got everything there that you need. I like how you structured it or managed to engineer it Where the lighting doesn't spill over. I like I like that. If you want to go down, just go check it out. Go right down Orchard Road. It's right on Just south of thirty there. The west side.
The intersection of Jericho.
Jericho.
I got a Yeah, Jericho, right.
I got a couple of questions. So um Asbury Gardens, that's behind there to the to the west. So I can't really see from here, but do you have any fencing up? I guess would be my first question.
On all our facilities, we have a sound fencing. It calls Simtech.
How high is that?
It is eight foot and we typically put that on a a two to three foot berm. And uh, that's and then we put landscaping, both coniferous and deciduous landscaping in in front of that.
So how about them truck side lane or pulling up to that pumps there and you got that last Unit there that's on the south southeast corner. Yeah, right there. Well, um I can see issues coming with some of this. I don't know if you talked to Asbury yet. Um, they're the owner of the property. So I mean, has he seen this plan?
Yes. And and what we find is that our The whole issue of diesel fumes and such is is again of older technology. Everything is different. When I started doing uh and I've been doing retail fueling facilities for a long time. Things have changed dramatically. Uh, the the things with the the DEF Few, it's called diesel exhaust fumes. It actually spurts into the exhaust of a diesel and changes that nitrogen oxide into Nitrogen and water. So two harmless chemicals. Um, and that is mandated nationally now. And basically about five years ago, eighty-five percent of the fleet has the DEF. And so and very shortly, a hundred percent of the fleet, some of the old trucks that are still there Um, will be be off the road. Uh, but in terms of our customers, they typically do not idle. Uh, they're they're there for a short time. They turn off, they fill the twenty minutes or so And that allows them to go into the store as well. And and then they they pull out and they are not idling in a parking space. They they do not idle like it. There is no parking space for them to idle in.
Most part, they don't really stay there. You ever go to that one, you never see like a truck sitting there.
So my question to that point would be, would this increase traffic, truck traffic on Route thirty one? Would this become a destination for trucks? Because where else is the next The next closest place for them to get gas? We've got our block one and we've got our redevelopment on thirty one. And I just don't want to do anything that now is going to increase truck traffic, you know, and kind of stifle our development.
Correct. And and we understand that concern. That's one of the nice things about our business is that we are a siphoning use. There's existing sufficient amount of truck traffic on the roads today to bring it, Bring that those customers in that warrant the investment of those two lanes. However, two lanes tucked. I'm I'm getting it. I'm getting that. I'm I'm specifically getting to that. So that is only two lanes behind the building. It doesn't have parking, doesn't have A full serve restaurant, doesn't have laundry facilities. So there is no draw to the site. It's those that are going by it.
Trying to understand is where is the next closest place for them to get gas? So now we've got all these trucks. Are we going to be seeing people getting off at eighty-eight to come get gas?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
You got a big problem with a lot of trucks on thirty one. It's a narrow street.
We we can guarantee that that will not be it. We're looking at seven trucks a day here. Again, what I mentioned, the ones that are in eighty-eight have fleet fueling cards and the top three vendors TA And uh Petro and then Loves. They take eighty-five to ninety percent of that volume.
And even so, they wouldn't want to go south. They wouldn't want to go north.
Yeah. And and to go here, it's quite frankly, a little arduous. And truck drivers will not take a more difficult journey to get to a site Than uh what is very easy on a travel center where it's a pull off, a pull on for them. Uh, so again, our our customers are are the box trucks and the the lung, um The landscape trucks and then also what's called the day runners, which is like a WB fifty-three uh that are making deliveries.
I'm wondering where in the facility the video gaming is to go and Uh, it's that you say that there's going to be a coffee element, right? In terms of a restaurant and then perhaps some type of other fast food Uh, restaurant. So where does the video gaming fit into that? And that I assume will be open twenty-four hours.
That is on the 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 sheet that is in your packet that's towards the front windows on the left Hand side of the store. So you're going in, it's clearly visible from the cashier area. And it's right in right in the front. There's there's a low wall with a little glass kind of partition.
So it's not within the restaurant?
It is not. It's a separate area all itself.
So it's like a video gaming parlor. I mean, it's part of the gas station.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
Is the is the uh video gaming twenty-four hours too?
It 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 would be by state mandate. Uh, as they say, the facility is open, the gaming is is open.
Is the convenience store uh open twenty-four hours and is also the uh fueling uh services open twenty-four hours?
The auto service, the auto fueling and the convenience store would be twenty-four hours, yes. The CFL or commercial feeling, the two lanes in the back would have limited hours. And and that just makes sense for the customers that's on there. Again, the purpose for us mainly to be overnight. We do not make Great sales at two or three in the morning. It's that our employees are coming in, getting the store ready. There's there's already activity there and we like to um keep the pumps open and operating and such.
Um, question about the gaming again. Uh, so if it doesn't have the characteristics, which is actually in my my opinion, a good thing Of a typical truck truck stop, how is it qualified for gaming that doesn't have those characteristics?
There or and that's big confusion because the the state of Illinois calls it a truck stop. Uh, but it The you have to have a certain minimum volume of diesel dispensing. And you need to have that as a separate canopy. And then you need to be over three acres. Where that magic number came from, I don't know. Uh, but that is, so you got to have the three acres. You got to have the separate Fueling facility for the commercial vehicles and then you have to hit a minimum per month to have the gaming. It has nothing with doing, we're not seeking for license. We do not have open liquor in our establishments. Um, so it is separate from, it's a different requirement. It's it's the The size of the lot, the separate feeling facilities and the volume of that that product.
Okay. So the administrators of the gas station then wouldn't allow someone to say, purchase a beer and then go sit at A terminal and play.
Correct.
And then one of my other concerns is just the food options and and coffee that you mentioned because We've got uh Dunkin' and Mocha all within a a mile or less From this location and we'd hate to ruin someone else's business By promoting this, obviously as a gas station, they're going to have coffee, but I would hate to see just a coffee shop go in there.
No, it it won't just be the coffee shop. The other food offering will be there. It's typically the morning is The more we're trying to capture some of the morning rush from our fueling customers that are on the site. But the your lines from Dunkin' Donuts won't reduce.
Uh, they've got their fan base. We've got a few Dunkins
Yep.
Right now. So I I just want to make sure that it doesn't put one of our other businesses out.
Yeah.
So myself, I'm not really a fan of the slots in the gas station. I don't see the attraction of unicephals. People do, but you get ten dollars in gas and Hundred dollars in the slot machine. But To me, I I wonder why you had two pumps back. There were seven trucks, but that qualifies you for the slot machine then, right? That right? I mean, seven trucks a day doesn't seem like it's going to take you a while to make your money back and and then that if that's the true number that you get filling up.
It again, a a truck feeling is a hundred gallons a pop at least. It could be up to two hundred gallons depending on how empty they are. Um, so The the volume, we have to hit ten thousand gallons a month of diesel sales. And so that's why we have the two, because when one is feeling, they're typically take fifteen to twenty minutes.
I mean, we've been working hard to keep gaming parlors out of the village, you know, and this kind of You know, looks like that a little bit, so.
Yeah, I I really have a, I really have a a concern about that. Um, also with it being right next to this residential area, you have a car wash that's going right for twelve or fifteen hours a day. More and more increased truck traffic like trustee Curtis said. Um, and here in the in the village, We have restaurants that have gaming and there's a very specific requirement to have gaming. Um, it has to be a certain size of restaurant and this really is like a gaming parlor, right? There's no restaurants associated with it. It's open twenty-four hours a day. Those are some of my concerns.
Yeah, I like most of what's here minus the The semi gas areas, the the commercial vehicles and the gaming, obviously.
Do you just dislike that? You said with the pumps running back there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But they would take them out of the, you mean? Add anything else?
No, I mean, I The one on, I've I've actually frequent the one in Orchard and Jericho and it it is very nice. I mean, that is probably the one good thing about all of this is it's it is a very nice building. They do have a lot of offerings inside the store. Um, and quite honestly, I I knew that there's gaming on that one over there. But for some odd reason, I remember like I've gone there all the time. I don't even really notice it, even though it's literally right there. So.
Never seen anybody at the gaming.
Yeah, no, I mean, they're there, but and you know me, I'm I'm over the last couple of years, I've been pretty down on gaming myself, but Um, my my that part of it, I think I can be okay with. I would just want to make sure I know Asbury is the owner, so I'm assuming they will. They were okay with this, but did you say they did see the concept and they didn't have any concerns?
No, and we're still working with them because
Okay.
The property line of the property we're buying goes right through their trash enclosure. So we we've got to do some denagling with the property.
If you look on this plan, this crazy jagged bumpy line, it's actually the property line. Not sure why It ended up with a curve, a hook, but I guess that's leftover from when there was the the hotel there. Um, but like that's their trash enclosure. You know, this building down here, I don't know if the end of the building has any windows. I think the windows are on these sides of the building, so I I'm not positive, but I don't believe there's windows that would face where the the diesel islands are. I think that's a brick wall. Um, but you know, those are things we can look into.
Yeah.
Where the units face and everything.
Yeah. And I was like, I'm sorry, I also like the idea of thirty-one getting widened. That's that that's part of this. That's great.
And and we've been looking at an empty lot there for over twenty years.
Yeah, it's
And it's kind of like a planted area now. Again, it's repairing our village, making it look nice. The building is beautiful. Suggests everybody go down and look at it.
I did see it. I mean, you're the one, it is, that's the first thing I noticed. I have never went there, but I was both corners and looking at it and I mean, it was uh, you know, it's new. But that wasn't, you're not your typical.
We'll give you some addresses of old ones and they are very well maintained.
Tell you that. Car wash and everything kind of complement each other and it did seem to work there, you know?
Um, uh, just a quick comment, though Asbury is the owner, as we talked about the residents actually being at Asbury. Because this is a special use for the PUD, there is a two hundred and fifty uh foot notice requirement for a public hearing if this moved forward to an actual A development process.
We got three yeses down here.
I I I'm I'm good with it.
Okay, so far. Okay.
Uh, yeah, I have some concerns and and just be and as Asbury is the the owner of the land, I'm not sure that they Are representing the sentiments of the residents who live there, right? They're selling the land. They're making a profit on it. So that seems to make sense that they would be fine with the development. I'm not sure that they're representing what the residents feel about it.
All right, thanks. Well, Guess we'll move ahead to the, yeah.
Yeah, at this point, Nathan, if that's the center of the board, then we'll work with the developer on going through the development process, getting it ready for plant commissions in the middle.
Yes.
Right, thank you. Yep. Julie, would you like to come up? Sorry, I didn't see uh your hand up there when the people were done, but yeah, come up and please tell us your comments or questions.
Um, so back to the others building. So Question about north and south. I understand obviously we talked about or she talked about like the full circle movement in order to be most efficient. So my question would be, can there be signage on the north side that says like truck? So my question would be, can there be signage on the north side that says like truck exit only or truck entrance at south or something like that? Um, because if you're having trucks able to go in the north and the south, and is there going to be a problem with them exiting if they're coming different ways? Um, so to me, if we want to keep a circle, we should say, you know, like trucks should only be able to exit that way because it sounds like exiting from the south isn't an option.
Like more of a fire lane up there than.
Correct.
So the, you know, the, the new tenant for the existing building definitely wants their trucks entering on the south because that's where their stacking is. But yes, Beembo trucks enter here with the big arrow is a great idea.
Yeah. And I mean, for the new building too, we don't have a tenant, right? But I mean, it seems to make sense that everyone should be entering the same route because isn't that going to be, like Beembo is going to be exiting, this other guy's coming in, like that's not going to really.
And they can still exit on the south. Um, you know, the, the, the drive aisles are wide enough for two-way traffic on both sides.
Okay.
Um, they just, and I'm going to put words in their mouth to say let. Uh, but, uh, you know, they wouldn't want it prohibited because there's going to be times where, you know, you have a trailer here, but it's got to be parked over here.
Right.
So they want to, you know, bring it around and, and stuff like that. If you only have one way to do that.
Yeah.
Then everyone.
So maybe it could be a suggestion.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing I wanted to just mention is they taught you, they talked about the building dropping 15 feet or what have you. But that's like the gradient of all of the property. So like the houses that are on that end are also dropping.
It is generally going downhill from mid.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm saying is like, it's the same, like the fence to home height is the same between both buildings. It's not like the people behind the new building are going to have, are going to be way lower than the fence. You know what I'm saying? Like it's all.
Yeah, the houses are with the same grade as that.
Yeah, like it's all the same.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point.
But is the berm not on a higher?
Is it berm?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking that they're planning on.
Everything goes down together. So there's no, I would encourage everybody to go see the, see the property right down the street, of course. So I would just encourage to have like a visual of what, what it looks like, right? What the berm looks like, what the easement looks like, you know, how the homes are, you know, the distance and I would just encourage it for, um, just a good understanding of what it looks like in real, real life. I think, I mean, obviously the south entrance is going to be huge for us. I was one of the ones sending photos at two in the morning of all the trucks idling and waking me up. So it's going to be huge to, to not have that happening. Um, as far as the fencing, I think it's, it would still be helpful just from aesthetics because we can see like directly into their lobby, especially in the winter when all the trees lose their leaves. Um, you know, I think obviously 10 foot is great. I think eight foot is better than nothing from that point of view. Um, but if you only put it at 302 and not 300, it's doing us a little bit of disservice. Granted, I understand there are budget concerns from your perspective, if you're doing cost sharing, but, um, aesthetically, because the fencing will be behind the trees, like I think it'll still be like aesthetically pleasing to like look out and see like trees and then a fence instead of just fencing. Um, plus we have the easement that will give us a little bit of, um, distance. We're not going to be staring at a fence. So of course I would vote for 10 if we can pass it, but it's not up to me. Um, I think the choice of fence is aesthetically pleasing. Um, and if it's that track, it'll be essentially lasts forever, right? There's not, shouldn't really be maintenance on there. Um, I think that's, oh, and just the lights. I don't know if they put the guards on the ones on the building or just on the posts. I think the lights on the building are still the same as they always been. Um, yeah, just the posts. So from the building lights, those are the ones to me that shine most because they're like in our sightline. But I don't know what the plan is for those in the new building versus existing, but, um, yeah, I don't know if that was part of the plan or not, but, um.
I mean, does the light go beyond the property?
Yeah, I mean, it lights up our backyards to a degree. Yeah. I mean, it's better this time of year, obviously because the trees are fuller, but the majority of the trees there, or a lot of them, I should say, are, what is it? Deciduous? They have leaves. So in the winter it's rough because there's, you know, it's like sticks essentially, but. Um, the other comment, I know we, you talked about wanting to put budget towards trees versus fencing. Um, so I would say one, in the winter, it's going to be rough if they're not all pines. Two, we're not going to initially install 15 foot pine trees, right? So it's going to take years and years for them to be like a height and a fullness across that are going to be beneficial to the residents. So I think that's it.
All right, thank you.
I want to, I just want to say thank you. As of Nathan, I know has done a lot of, um, has worked with us a lot as have you guys. Obviously, the new tenant, the largest are willing to make some updates. So we definitely appreciate that for our wellbeing.
Thank you. Any else? Steve?
Nope, that's it.
All right. So I'll need a motion to, uh, to adjourn to exec session to discuss, uh, collect bargaining and item two, property acquisition.
Motion to adjourn.
My previous say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both the same? All right, thank you.